Yeah, you got it. Bernal and Kim, could you please mute your phones until you're ready to speak so we don't get the background noise?
Sure.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Can everyone please rise to pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the great 旗帜 stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please ask for a moment of silence for our first responders and military who've given the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you. We have Councilman Bernal Willerson and Mayor Butcher both joining us on the phone tonight for personal reasons. First item up is public comment on agenda items. No? Jim, were you gonna present this after or?
Yeah, I'll do both at the same time.
Okay.
We're further down the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, then seeing the public comment, visitors' presentation in the Ross. There's a microphone right there.
This is what you said?
Nope, I can, I have a slideshow.
So we just get over to keeping it down at the bottom?
It probably won't let you do anything.
Could you use slideshow at the top and then from the beginning?
Just start an introduction, I'll get back dropped in.
Hello, Council, I am Ryan Ross's oldest child, my name is Eva, and I am here tonight to present to you all about banning single-use disposable plastic bags in New Freedom. I am a University of Pittsburgh junior and I have worked at Bon Bee's for three years.
Is a button pushed? There we go.
Sorry. I can also grab, I could put my laptop up here and present. I can do that, that's easier than trying to get it to the TV.
I think he's putting it in, so.
Here.
You just a minute.
He might have to get closer to the microphone to do so.
You can just sit down.
Yeah.
I prefer you to stand. All right, you wanna scroll and then skip that one. All right, so we can start with talking about plastic pollution. Obviously, this is a serious issue. We all know about the dangers of pollution. Five hundred billion bags are used every year. That is a lot of zeros behind that number. I know I certainly cannot count them all. Most of them end up in landfills where they can take ten to a hundred years to degrade, and even when they degrade, it is to smaller, even more harmful microplastics. We are a part of the Chesapeake Bay watershed, meaning that any pollution that ends up in our waterways, our local streams and rivers, will go into the Susquehanna River and then into the Chesapeake Bay, which ultimately drains into the Atlantic Ocean. So we have a really direct route into the ocean, which is even bigger reason why it's so important for us to be protected on waterways and our land where animals can eat these bags. We all know the stories of the sea turtles eating the bags because they look like the jellyfish, but what people don't always consider or think about is that that plastic bag will make its way up the food chain because if the sea turtle eats the plastic bag, but then the shark eats the sea turtle, then that plastic bag is now in the shark's stomach. And there's a thing called trophic magnification, which I'm not going to get in depth for you guys about, but it basically states that the higher you get up the food chain, the more an animal has to eat, and that means the more, like the more plastic it ends up eating, which can be really harmful to these animals. So the proposition is, we ban disposable plastic bags in New Freedom Borough, no plastic takeout or grocery bags. Instead, they will be replaced with paper bags, and stores will be mandated to charge at least five to 10 cents per bag. This is, that money would not go to the borough and it would not go to anybody but the company. They keep that five to 10 cents to help them offset the cost of the switch from plastic to paper bags. Plastic bags range from two to five cents a bag, and paper bags range from five to 25 cents a bag, which is a really big range, but it is super dependent on the size of the bag, where you get it from, the supplier, and also if you buy it in bulk or not. So those numbers are really hard to get a super firm answer on. This has been done in 200 municipalities, including the city of Pittsburgh and the city of Philadelphia, as well as towns like Westchester, the entirety of Baltimore County and Baltimore City. This is a really common thing that's been put in effect across the country. In addition, eight states, California, Connecticut, Delaware, Hawaii, Maine, New York, Oregon, and Vermont, have banned single-use plastic bags. So there's no state initiative at the moment to ban them, which is why so many municipalities and cities across the state have. Most businesses say they experience no economic hardship, and what little they do is able to be offset by that five to 10 cent bag fee. And I guess personally, as a consumer, I go to school in the city of Pittsburgh, I buy things that then come in paper bags. That five to 10 cent fee truly does not have a large impact on my economics, even as a rural college student. And that fee is also to encourage people to bring their own tote bags. I know I have just started bringing a tote bag with me when I go out shopping. It's super easy, super convenient, and it means that you don't have to pay that five to 10 cents, and then you just have all your things in your bag, and then you don't have a million bags laying around your house, because I'm sure we all do. Benefits, the most obvious benefit is the environment. It is ultimately the reason why I have come to you guys today, because I am an environmental science major, and this is something that I deeply care about. However, there's also some other, like, kind of positives. It would be a really good look for a small town like New Freedom. Most of the areas that have done this are larger, they're either counties or they're larger cities. It would be a really neat thing for a small town to do. Pollution is a serious problem, and harming the environment will lower property values and decrease tourism. I wouldn't say that we're 100% a tourism economy, but we certainly have a large part of it. The train and the trail that run through bring a lot of people through our town, and the businesses that are located close to the trail get a lot of business from that trail, and so by keeping our environment clean and keeping our environment nice, then we're more likely to have more people to come see the beautiful land that we are blessed to live on. All right, thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
So how hard is it to get someone that started? Do you have to go to the grocery stores first to get them to buy in, or is it the borough mandated, or how does it happen?
So usually it's like a city or a borough mandate. I do have, if you want to pull up the examples of the ordinances, I have found some, I think I have the Baltimore County one and the Westchester one in there, and the Upper Dublin Township, which is a town in, I actually don't know where that is, but I did find that one online. So it would be a borough mandate, and it would require businesses to essentially stop distributing these single-use plastic bags. And I'm not positive about this, but I can get back to you if the five to 10 cent fee is recommended or mandated for the businesses.
So the only people the borough would be talking to, I guess, would be the grocery stores and whatever.
Yes, there are actually, a reason why it is a good idea to start this in New Freedom is that there are actually very few businesses that use plastic bags. So the amount of, like, businesses, companies, people that this would actually impact is relatively small. I believe Rudder's does, and I think Vortex and Seven for takeout containers. I did not get a chance to speak to either of those two businesses, but I have spoken to Departure and I've spoken to Bon Bee's, neither of which use plastic bags. And so, yeah, so yeah, I would, sorry, to answer your question, it would be a borough mandate.
Microplastics and PFOS, is it one of the same? Different?
What's PFOS? What are you saying there?
It's something that I've read online about different plastics being used in fabrics, and they get tied into forever chemicals like plastic. Are they different?
Forever chemicals are a little different than microplastics. Forever chemicals are chemical contamination of waterways and, like, ground areas. Microplastics are physical, small pieces of plastic that are, like, smaller than we can see, that end up in animals and humans, like, systems. Basically, they found it in, like, the placenta of expecting mothers, they found it in newborns, it is everywhere, and this will obviously not single-handedly stop that problem, but it would be something that we can do to stop it.
Anything else? Okay. I'm gonna recommend that we put it on for next month as an agenda item, so that we can fully discuss it in council. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Next up is approval of minutes for our regular meeting held July 14th. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it. Motion in a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Approval of Treasurers Report dated July 2025. Can I would entertain a motion?
Motion for approval of the Treasurers Report, July 2025.
Second.
Discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Unfinished business, Stormwater Channel on North Constitution Avenue?
So that permit, the joint permit with PennDOT and Army Corps of Engineers has been satisfied, and the closing documentation has been sent, and that permit is now closed out, so that project is complete.
I'll take it off the agenda starting next month?
Correct.
Any questions on that? Paul Smith Library, notice of termination, member library agreement, and consider authorizing the release of the August 25 allocation in the amount of $1,000. Jim, were you going to speak to this, or? I've been reporting on this, did you want to speak to this?
No.
Okay, no's a good answer, it's okay. All right, just to bring everybody up to date, the library has received a notice from the York County Library System, giving them 45 days, it's not really 45 days, it's actually till the end of this year, December 31st, to either become a branch or to go independent. As we've discussed in the past, going independent really doesn't do anything for the library, they would lose all of their funding, all of their support, or they would lose their state and local funding and all of their support from York County Library System. So that letter went out on, yeah, on the date?
Last Friday?
Yeah, I think it was last Friday. Hey.
August 1st?
August 1st, Friday, August 1st, thank you. And that came through, an email, and on Sunday, August 3rd, Buck Buchanan, who is acting as the liaison between the Mason-Dixon Library, the Paul Smith Library, and the municipalities, sent a text to all three county commissioners asking for a response to our request for a meeting. And they, it looks like they are going to grant a meeting, but it will only be an informational meeting. So that's what, that's what happened on that front. And Carl, who is the, he's the chairman of our library board, is, has sent out a, I probably should get copies of this made for all the council members, I should have done that ahead of time, I apologize. But this is the item going out to all the library members, talking about the key points that we've already discussed, and talking about the loss of income from the county of $34,600 and the state of $62,000. And, oh, by the way, I guess, is that Robert Lambert from York County Library Systems has suggested that in order for us to even be branch libraries, it would require a 50% increase in municipal support and funding. So that's about where we are with that. So I'm waiting to see what meeting dates we get back from Buck and from the county commissioners. Does anyone have any questions?
Could I just add some comments?
Oh, absolutely, sure. You want to grab the microphone, just so?
My wife Jeanne has been involved with the library since it started in New Freedom, and some of the things that a lot of people still are not aware of is, if Paul Smith and Mason Dixon become branches, the local control of what happens at the library disappears completely, and it becomes under the rule of Robert Lambert from York. The hours presently at the Paul Smith Library are 51 hours a week. If they become a branch, that reduces to 31. And that interferes with a lot of the young children whose parents bring them to the library, or the other cases, or whatever. Control would be totally gone. One of the questions, well, there's been several questions put forth to Mr. Lambert, who, as long as three months, and we have yet to receive an answer, those questions. And we also, one of the questions is, why is the library system $1.8 million in debt when Mason Dixon and Paul Smith are not in any debt? Now, Paul Smith does have a present problem, they have to replace the roof, which is a considerable six-figure cost, but they would be able to do it through time. So I think that's about all I want to bring out for now. But there will be a campaign started publicly to get the public, if you are so desir to go against becoming a branch and force the county at least to continue their support financially to Paul Smith and Mason Dixon libraries if they become separate branches. There's nothing we can do about the state, although there was one person that indicated the state gives the county money, and if the county gets in, I'm talking about the county commissioners, get involved with how that money gets distributed, they could still distribute it to the Paul Smith and Mason Dixon libraries. So there's a couple of things that we're starting to work on. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What has the school board pledged to do to make sure that the students that they serve in our district do not lose the ability to use our library as we're accustomed to?
We haven't, we haven't approached the school board at this point in time. Neither Paul Smith or Mason Dixon have approached either school district. They made the school district aware of it, but school districts have financial problems of their own, so we wouldn't expect too much more financial support, but.
You do get a lot of funding, the districts get a lot of funding. I've seen the budgets in the meetings, they do. I think that would be reasonable to reach out to the districts
Oh, absolutely.
To help us with what we're facing here, to keep our libraries solvent and in the control of the communities that built them. I would hope that words would go.
Yes, we do intend to do that, but we haven't yet, it's just, we wouldn't. Thank you. And what else have, you know, questions?
Is this a, is this a normal thing? I mean, does every county do this and disenfranchise the local libraries?
This has, it is an indication across the state of what people are doing. It's basically pulling in all the resources to a centralized location. I know Jim talked about the county commissioners still funding at the county level. I, in speaking with Christian Phillips Hill and with the county commissioners, it looks like there are legal, there's legal problems with that, because all the money gets funneled, uh, funneled, funneled through the York County Library System, and that, that is set up as a process of procedure, I'm not sure that it's a law, but it is set up so that everything funnels through York County Library System. If that's the case, I don't see how they can pull the funding out and keep it separate to give to Mason Dixon or Paul Smith.
So other, so Cumberland County, Duffin County, everybody, everybody has to, the same kind of thing to deal with, right?
I haven't looked at other counties, I couldn't answer your question.
I mean, it just seems like this, this whole thing way out, out of left field, not even considering any of the local needs, and I didn't know if everybody else had worked the same way or not.
It's a good question. I'm gonna find out. Well, I mean, it is set up state funding where the funding has to go through the county library system, so that would include other counties. So I know from a state standpoint, that's probably what the interest probably is. I don't know how it is from the county funding. Okay. I'll keep everyone posted as soon as I find out any additional information. I would entertain a motion to authorize the release of the August 2025 allocation in the amount of $1,000, because this does not take effect until the end of the year.
Make a motion for the approval of the $1,000.
Oh, okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
My vote is aye. Sorry.
Can you just have a copy of that letter that you held up?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Just like, not now, but after?
Yeah, you want the one from?
The green one you held up and said?
Oh, okay, that's, yeah, absolutely.
With budget and everything coming up, is there anything that we could do similar to what we're already doing with the $1,000 to donate to the friends of, to make sure that it stays here in Southern York County? I don't know if that would hurt, if that would help?
That's a question that's been asked of YCLS. All we know right now is, any money collected by this local library goes to York County Library System when they become a branch.
Even, even if it's through your fundraising group, the friends of?
Yes. Robert has actually made the statement that he would expect the friends of the library to raise so much money to help offset the expenses. So he's actually expecting people to go out and raise money to give to York County Library System, and we would have no guarantee that it would come back to us.
That's what I'm saying, so he wants, just say, Southern York County to raise money that then goes into the York County pool of money that could go to Dover, or that could go to Manchester, that.
He tells the libraries exactly how much they have to fundraise a year, just like seeing it happen in Glanville.
Yeah, I, I understand, because he's saying that they have to make up X, but I'm just wondering how, if there's a way that we can work around that to keep that money here.
Is he, is he in a pointed position by the county?
He actually, he reports to a board. The board is approved by the county commissioners, however, Mr. Lambert submits those names to the county commissioners for approval. So effectively, it would be as if I would select my own board, give them to the county commissioners and say, I want these five people. The county commissioners would install them, and then I would report to the people who I just told the county commissioners or asked the county commissioners to appoint. That's how that works.
You can't get rid of what's in that?
Yeah, it's a pretty good gig if you can get it.
Their meetings are not open?
You have to break all the stuff that makes sense.
Which really should be in violation of sunshine law, because it's state and county money. There's no way that the meeting should be closed and the minute sealed, that's, that's.
If I wanted, if I wanted to go to a meeting, I'd try to get in, I'd be turned away.
Probably.
Have you reached out to this?
Mr. President? This is Kim. Is there any way that we could look into that with the violation of sunshine and report that and ask for open meetings? I, I would recommend it, I think that would be part of our campaigning whenever Jim starts out to, I don't know, I don't know what words to use, to do battle?
Talked about that meetings, it's how they classify themselves, that's why they're exempt from it, it's their classification.
They classify themselves as a nonprofit, but all of their money comes from state and county taxes.
You'd have to change your classification.
My question is, have you reached out to the media, Fox 43, Channel 8?
Soon.
Soon? Like, real, real soon? Okay, all right.
Jenny?
So since our last borough meeting, I have actually contacted WGAO and YDR 14 times and have not gotten a response. But if we bombard them, maybe go listen.
We actually have people in the group that have contacts, and so I would hope that you would be using, you need names, you know the names, right?
No.
I'll give you them after the meeting. But yeah, we back, we actually have people who are, who have friends who work there who would help us out, and they've offered to help us out, so. And they've offered to help us out. So I would hope that we would be using those people.
I think the commissioners need to be put on the hot seat for running or letting this operation go $1.8 million in the hole. And not telling people or letting people in the county know, I mean, you know, how many people know it out there. And I think that's the way you get to their attention because there's a lot of voters down here in this area. And that's what they think about votes. So I think pressure needs to be put on them too.
I agree with you 100%.
Have any, so there's three of them. Have any of them come out with support of any change, like?
All three of them at this point have agreed, correct me if I'm wrong, because something might have changed in the last two days. But all three county commissioners have said that they would support having a meeting with the library committee. They would, they would support an informational meeting, but that would at least get our foot in the door to start.
But there's already been a meeting. They know the situation.
They know the situation, that there's not been a meeting with, you've not met with them. Our, Paul Smith has not-
A few of you met with the commissioners and everybody else wasn't able to go.
Me? No.
Couple like Buck and a couple of them had met. Yep. Nobody's met with the commissioners yet?
Not, not in a full body, no.
Not in a full body, but just-
Rick, Buck has talked to one or two, but not as a group.
Yeah. But there hasn't been a discussion in detail yet. Hopefully, that's going to happen in the next week.
That's when the pressure will come. Anything else? Did we get about, yeah, we did, right? All right. Next up is the solar energy facility decommissioning bond requirements.
Just an update. The New Freedom Borough Planning Commission will review that draft language during their meeting coming up on the 18th at 6 o'clock. So again, their, their goal in that meeting would be to review it, to consider giving approval to council to consider adoption. So that's just the next step in the process.
Consider approval of the letter of intent to DCD for implementation of the recommendations from the fire study.
So the language was revised from the meeting in July when there were some concerns over the verbiage in section three there. So that was sent out and reworked to show the, the language there and it's up for council's consideration.
It's been changed to evaluate the viability of implementing the recommendations. It's not to implement the recommendations. I would entertain a motion to approve this letter.
Make a motion for the approval of the letter of intent.
Motion in a second. Is there further discussion?
When are we gonna get to speak to our fire station's local issues bearing in freedom on their thoughts of this study, outside the study?
Sorry, say that one more time.
Like when, like there's the study that's been done, but when are we gonna get to hear from our firehouse, our local firehouses on what they believe and, and see the viability of the recommendations in the study? Like, I could think one thing, but it could be totally off. How come we can't hear from, you know, firehouses themselves?
We actually, we actually-
Mr. President?
Hold on a sec. We actually have, I think Kim's going to talk about, are you gonna talk about the study and what the fire station said?
Yeah, they were, they, they were pretty upset about it.
Of the old one?
Yes, because they didn't really understand the full meaning of what the old one said. Now, I think before we pass anything with the new one, it needs to go by the, by the fire company. Or the powers that be up there. And in Shrewsbury also. Because the fire chiefs right now are at a point that they don't know what's going on, whether this is good or not. I mean, I've discussed it with them. I told them that it's not gonna stay the way the original was, that we were looking at some changes, but I think before we pass anything, we need to work this by them.
I don't see a problem with doing that, but I mean, this is, this was discussed with Chris Boyer. And I believe Todd talked to all the fire people about this. And the words were changed so that we could continue getting funding to continue studying, but that it's only to consider and evaluate the viability. It's not to, last one said that we were going to implement recommendations. And right now, we know that our fire companies realize that down the road at some point, there may be a requirement to pull resources and pull them into one fire company. But all of them agree that that time is down the road, not now. So they, they are not in favor at all of, of implementing anything that would require them to basically close up shop in New Freedom and open up a fire station at the-
Springfield Township.
Right. Definitely, definitely. That's what their main concern was.
Opening up in Springfield Township, closing here and moving everything, like the study said.
Right, yeah. No, that would not happen.
I'm just really torn on this. I think we, we need to talk. Absolutely. Talking, you know, by getting ideas out there, but it sounds like Kim is saying that the two firehouses are really just against, against this? Is that correct, Kim?
Well, well, they're, they're against the original. I don't know if they've even seen, I mean, we, I don't have a copy of the new one.
Well, what new one?
Well, I have this letter of intent. I don't have the, the copy with the changes.
What changes? To what? The study?
The word, the wording change.
You have in your, in your packet, you have, in your packet, you have a letter of intent, which changed from implement recommendations of the study to consider and evaluate the viability of whether or not we would even want to, whether or not we would even want to implement it. I think this is the next step in the study, which is a DCD study that would allow them to look at it. And it would, and it would, and they're going to be continuing to work with the fire companies. I mean, it's not, they're not going to do it in a vacuum.
Do you have the letter of intent in front of you, Kim?
I have the letter of intent, but I don't have the wording that was changed.
Look at, yeah, look in box three, it says description of project.
Okay.
Consider and evaluate the viability of implementing the recommendations.
Okay. I'm sorry, I haven't been well this week and I just got my packet today.
Okay.
So I haven't had the chance to really go over it.
The prior one, it sounded like we were just gonna, yeah, the prior one sounded, the wording sounded like we were gonna adopt it. And that's why I was objecting to it, that we need to have communication and speak and, you know, explore the options. And I think this, with the word consider and evaluate the viability, I think opens up for discussion.
Can I, can I, okay. This is, this is from Chris and he, and he's talked to Shrewsbury, but he basically said, "We were presented with the same letter. We tabled it because," oh, no, that was me talking. Okay. What I said was, "We were presented with the same letter. We tabled it because the language in the letter of intent implied we were going to implement their suggestions." "I actually quoted the fire companies as saying, 'We were not there yet. We are asking them to change the word and to take out the implementation and to continue the study portion only.'" "I'm going to send this to Todd and see what their thoughts are on this. Thanks for pointing this out," which Chris had said he was upset with it. "I don't think it is anyone's intent to change the structure of reporting at this time, only to see what it might look like in the future." "As I said, New Freedom did not sign the letter of intent with its current language." And he said, "Thank you for that. See you tomorrow."
Was it, was this in an email or a conversation?
It was a text message.
Would you please make sure that in the future you CC me on that? Because I'm the one that goes to the meetings and I'm the one that they question about this. And I didn't know that you had spoken to them.
Well, he, he actually, if he would, it's a very- He actually started, yeah, I could, I could do that. He's, he actually started the thread. He's, he texted me.
Yeah, well, he texted me too and he was a little upset. So I didn't know that there was another conversation that went on after that.
So this letter of intent means that we're not agreeing with anything in the study. Is that correct?
It means, it means that we are not accepting any of the recommendations in the study, but we are looking for them to continue to evaluate and work with our fire companies to see what they want to do.
The cost of that is all through the state.
And the cost of that is all through the state. And I think we should continue the study and so does Todd and so does, I, does, I think. I think Kim agrees with it too. And this is part of the, and this is part of the DCD study that we were participating in. I would hate to see all the work go to waste. I think it should be formalized and documented so that at some time in the future, it could be after I'm along on, that they put together a, a local fire company that's going to be maybe by the magistrate's office and be a combination of Glenrod, Shrewsbury, and, you know. I don't know what it's going to look like. I'm hoping the study will tell us what they think it should look like. But obviously Springfield's not the answer.
Well, right, and right now, there's, there's nothing to comment on, right? I mean, we need, it seems to me we need a starting point and this, this looks like it would be the starting point. At least we have some input, the fire company would have some input.
It's, it's the next step.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, there is a, there is a starting point because they've already done some fire study and they've put together some information that they've taken from interviews and questions to Shrewsbury, New Freedom, Glenrod, fire companies. This is the next step. But we are under no obligation whatsoever. If they come back and they say, "This is what you should do," we can say, "No, we're not going to do that."
Yeah, right.
Are the firehouses in favor of this study?
Well, they've been participating. They've all agreed to participate in it. So are they in favor of it? I don't think they would be in favor of implementing what the study says right now, but I think they would be in favor of participating in something that would be more realistic. And I, I would hope that that's what we would get out of it, is something that's more realistic. Like maybe we need to increase our volunteer program. Maybe, right now, we're doing things to increase volunteers. We've got our, our summer camp for the kids and we're increasing volunteerism through that, through that. We've, this council has already signed ordinances and, and to have a fire tax reduction for, for people's property taxes as a incentive to stay with the fire company. So we are taking steps to do that. I was hoping that this study, the next step in this study would give us additional things that we could do.
Talk about, so the firehouse, Rose, is in favor of evaluating the viability of the study?
Not the study that exists right now. I would not be in favor of, it would not be in favor of merge-
Of the intent, but we're voting on the intent of that study. And they're not in favor of that study. So why are we even voting on this intent?
The study, the study isn't done.
It says, "evaluate the viability of implementing the recommendations in that study." They're not, they're not for that study.
Not right now. That's, that's the point, is they're, they are not in favor of consolidating at this point. But I think wrapping up this study, which is, this is the next step, is, I think that's important to do.
Agreed.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I brought this up last time. And the reason I brought it up was because I didn't like the idea that we had to go along with everything they said.
We don't.
No, I mean, from what they were saying, we probably eventually would have. And they have changed to some degree. So, I mean, if we're not called in the trap where, yeah, you agreed to it, now you have to go with it.
No. We would never, we would never have to do that. That would, that would require not only a vote from us, but it would require a vote from our companies. They would have to agree to do whatever. So hopefully, this stu, the second phase of the study will give everybody advice and guidance and then they could decide what they want to do from there. Again, it's not a lock-in. It's not a-
Well, I, I understand that, but it sounds like these recommendations, they're not even in favor of to begin, to begin with.
Well, again, fire companies are going to be involved in the second phase of the study. So they're going to guide it in the direction that they want, wanted to go in.
So why isn't this study that we're voting on scrapped?
Because I don't think you throw it out for it. There were valuable lessons if they learned in the first study that they're gonna continue into the second.
Second phase of-
Yeah.
I think a lot of this letter of intent too was to make sure that they could keep chanceneforn and get more mon, keep getting the money from the state.
Keep in mind that the, yeah, I mean, what you said is exactly true. The letter of intent is just to authorize the state to fund the study. That's, that's what we're, that's what we're intending to do here. We're not locking in any, any agreement whatsoever to, to change how our fire companies are structured or how they work.
Will they continue to fund the study based on this?
I guess they'll come back and tell us if they don't want to. But I think they-
Yeah, because they may say, "We've already given you our recommendations. If you don't want it, now you pay for the additional."
Well, then we won't. I mean, that's, that's, it'll just go away at that point.
Yeah, it's understood.
I'm all for open discussions, absolutely, but this just something just doesn't seem right.
You think it's locking us into anything?
I, I don't think it's locking necessarily in, but it's saying that you're in favor of the study. And it sounds like, that's where I'm getting, it sounds like you're in favor by moving forward and putting more money into this when it's clearly the firehouses are saying, "We don't like this study." So, you know, and-
I, it, you know, the, the top end of this says, "The governing body is approving this request for assistance. No resolution is required." This is a form that we're sending in that allows them to continue the funding on the study. They could, they could start day one. I mean, they're gonna get together with, with the Fire and EMS group and they might, the fire companies might say, "Yeah, no, we don't want to go in that direction." I just, I just want to wrap up the study because right now, we don't have anything on, in paper really that has where we should go. We only have where they wanted us to go. And this will extend that to hopefully allow the fire companies to put in the words that they want and, and come up with a plan that'll help meet our future needs. That's all I got.
Why wasn't there input in the study already?
There was input into the study, but it was very, I, I would say it was very one-sided. I mean, they basically gathered data and then they came up with, "This is, this is what you should do." Would you agree with that, Kim?
I think it was more of a, this is a suggestion on what we think you might want to do.
Yeah.
Not, not should do. It's not, nobody's telling us what we should do with our fire companies. This was just a suggestion based on that ear review.
And that study was very clear, this is what you should do.
Well, I think, I think one thing that I want to point out, and I'm gonna shut up. But one thing I want to point out is there, the people who were doing the study pointed out to all of our fire companies that they were way ahead of where everyone else in the state is. to all of our fire companies that they were way ahead of where everyone else in the state is. That their methods, their cooperation, their volunteerism, their, you know, I gotta leave it at that, but I mean, they felt that our fire companies were head and shoulders above anything else in the state.
They're amazing. Yes, I agree. I do, too.
Can I say one more thing, Andy?
Sure.
We did the same study with EMS.
Right.
And we basically took their recommendations. We molded it to what we thought would work. And I personally went out to each and every municipality. And we came to the agreement with EMS that based on their budget, based on the percentage of calls that we make in your jurisdiction, that's the amount that you're going to pay our EMS to serve your area. And that worked out very well. This wasn't what the study recommended. This was what we came back to the study and said, "How about this?" And everybody agreed. And I think this is pretty much the same thing. We're just at the infancy of seeing how this might work out.
I would only add that the EMS study and the result was a huge team effort by probably 12 people.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Anyway, I'm going to take a vote on it and see where we decide. Does anyone have anything new to add?
No, other than I understand that the hesitancy lasts more, but with a different verbiage, I think it's more clear that this is just to consider and evaluate viability. And after that, when they're done, we can take it and leave it. Doesn't cost us anything. Doesn't cost us as a municipality. It's coming from state.
I know we can still continue talking, though.
Yeah, I don't have a problem talking about it.
If we don't even have this, we can still always.
Yeah, but this is just a, call it a starting point, conversation starter.
A while back, we had a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Say again?
Burnell, where did I?
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, all opposed?
I said, "I'm just not comfortable." The fire department's not comfortable with it. I know that, but there's. I'm open for more dialogue, absolutely.
My vote is aye.
Maybe with a new study, a new pathway.
Yeah. Okay, new business. Consider approval of the application for payment number five.
They have not submitted that.
Okay, so that goes away, right?
No payment application considered.
Right, so that'll probably be on for next month?
Yes.
Next, is consider approval to renew the winter maintenance agreement with PennDOT?
Let's get this over.
Say again?
Yeah, we're on the winter maintenance.
This is the same maintenance agreement that we have. Are there any changes or updates that you need to point out?
No, basically, as you indicated, this is a continuation of the existing agreement with PennDOT to maintain those streets during the winter months as shown in exhibit A. We did go through kind of a little exercise to break down what it actually costs to the borough to maintain those 10.4 snow lane miles. The snow lane mile by definition in the agreement is one-way, 12 feet wide, one mile wide. So we looked at what's the cost exposure to the borough to continue this agreement, breaking out road solve, labor, fuel, maintenance of the equipment, and then even adding in depreciation. And found that, given those statistics and those costs, even with a 15% contingency, our cost exposure is just a little over $3,000 a year. The first year allocation being just over $12,000 with the annual increase factored in at the bottom of the page. So I think it's, you know, pretty, it benefits the borough. Obviously, it benefits our residents to maintain those streets quicker than PennDOT would probably be able to address any snow maintenance needed on those roads. So.
Last couple, three years we went up.
Yeah, and actually, as we reported last month, PennDOT did, because of an additional definition that there was severe weather in the last year, we received an additional allocation of just over $5,000.
Anything like that in this?
Yeah, there's a cost adjustment in the agreement. And it does allow that, based on those statistics, PennDOT will increase those allocations. Apologize, I don't remember what page that was on.
Just let me confuse, so it just does a little bit, a lot, whatever. Do we always get the 12 or is it pro-rated or?
No, you always get, yeah. So the first year there, the first year PennDOT allocation is $12,266.91. You get that in part.
Okay.
Yeah, there would be additional adjustments if there's additional severe weather throughout the plowing season.
Andrew, do they pay at the beginning of the year or the end of the year?
That is paid right before we go into plowing season. So basically at the end of the year.
And you did this business case cost closure?
Yes.
Very interesting.
I think we just wanted to see because you can put a number on a piece of paper for how much money we're getting, but what does it actually cost the boroughs?
Probably could get done a lot faster.
Absolutely.
And in some cases, we actually need to continue plowing just to get rid of the snow anyway. I never asked for a motion. I apologize.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We consider approval to renew the winter majors agreement with PennDOT. Certainly.
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Consider approval of application for payment number one in the amount of $69,187.50 for the Bailey Avenue stormwater project.
This project is on schedule and they are moving forward. It most likely will be finished up within the next month. And just as a reminder, this project is fully paid for with a hazard mitigation grant from FEMA. Oh, from FEMA handed down to them that they distribute.
I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion for the approval of $163,812.50.
No. Sharon?
Yeah, it's, you want my.
$69,187.50. Burnell, second of it. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
My vote is aye. Consider approval of the road closure request from New Freedom Heritage for New Freedom Fest on September 20th. We have a map with the closure points. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion for the approval of the road closure points as listed on the map.
I'll second it. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? I'm sorry.
I believe it's all the same intersections and everything is.
It's all resets.
Yeah, I think the only thing that we discussed last year that was part of the motion and discussion was the placement of the tent on Franklin Street and how that's going to work with taking it down after the event is over and I know.
Is this the Vortex tent?
Yes. What's, I think that should probably be noted and included in council's consideration just to make sure that it's documented and what the plan is for that.
Okay, the plan is, Vortex this year is actually going to put up the tent. Last year, which was the first year, the Heritage rented the tent, put the tenant for them. And then they reimburse us, but this year, they're going to take care of it. And I met with the school district and there was a little problem with a school bus last year while the tent was being put up on Friday evening. And we can't start putting the tent up until after 3:45 in the afternoon because there's three bus stops on East Franklin Street. So Vortex will be made aware of that. And then we will request that they have the tent taken down either Saturday evening after the fest or Sunday.
So before Monday?
Before Monday. So could we modify the motion then that the tent will not go up until after 4:00 on Friday?
That's just for the closure.
Sorry? That's true.
Yeah.
Separate motion.
It was a little traumatic out there last year when I was there and there was some near misses and cars going around. I think we should be taking it up as soon as possible on Saturday after the event. It's like now in the dark overnight. There's new businesses there that just opened that they are quite heavily traveling. It depends a little bit which is why we have. My vortex is very right there.
So can we, you don't want me to, you don't want to modify the motion? Because we could modify the motion and notify Vortex that it has to be up not before 4:00 and down Saturday.
Just an amended motion.
Yeah, it's part of the street, it's part of the street closure, right? Put a tent up in the middle of the street.
Why don't you just amend the motion to include the Vortex tent not before 4:00?
I was going to make sure we don't, we brought a foul of our obligation to the open meeting law to cover a subject that we're not advertising. So.
Isn't it de minimis in nature?
That doesn't require any expenditure of borough funds, so yeah, I think we could probably do that.
Well, plus, it's directly related to the street closure on the point of being, the tent is going right there, right? So.
It blocks the, blocks one whole side of the roadway.
So we're just specifying that the tent, which is part of the road closure, has to go up after 4:00 on Friday and be down by Saturday.
Yeah, I think that's acceptable.
After the event.
I think that's acceptable. Do we have a second already?
Academy, do we?
Yeah, Ryan made the motion and Dennis coming in second.
Right, I'm in the motion that the tent be removed after the event. Or do we want a specific time?
Well, the event's over at 5:00.
5:00 on Saturday. So the tent cannot go up until after 4:00 on Friday and it has to be down after the event on Saturday.
Correct. So I didn't know if it was a specific time.
Does that work?
You need a vote on the amendment?
We're just modifying you.
We're just modifying the motion. I think we're fine with that.
Yeah, it's time for consent to move it.
Say again?
It's time for consent to move it, so you don't need to vote on it. You can just vote on the motion.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
My vote is aye.
Should we give an extra couple of seconds on the phone?
Yeah, there's a delay.
Just to make sure that he's.
I will pause.
Okay.
But I haven't given yet. Consider approval of contract, I'm sorry.
Do you want to speak to Vortex or would you like me to just communicate the borough's concerns and requirements?
We can do it.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. Could I have just one minute? Sure. One different time. Everybody was given a copy of a sheet, looks like this, at the top it says, "New Freedom Heritage." We have a gentleman, Rodney Stump, who is involved in grant applications. He was very successful in getting the Heritage Group in Dallas Town grant a couple of years ago. And now he's helping us out. And the sheet that you were given is just a little background of the grant application, how much it is. And what we're going to ask in the next month, probably. We would like to expand our museum and this grant would go a long way to helping with that. And as Rodney pointed out to us, and by the way, he's now a member of our Heritage Group. Expansion of our museum would qualify for this grant. And what would help the grant application is if the borough is a partner with the Heritage Group in the review of that grant. And of course, the Heritage, we would do a matching. We would match their grant because the project's going to be well over that. And so just become familiar with this and then if you have any questions, I'll be on the agenda probably next month's meeting to discuss this. Thank you. Yeah, that's what I was just looking to see, when next month's meeting is. So is that, I mean, you're going to proceed and we could participate at our next, we could put it on the agenda for our September 8th meeting?
Yes.
Have a resolution of support?
Well, the grant application will not be made until.
September 30th.
Not this year.
Oh, not this year.
Next year.
Ah, well, then we've got a lot of time.
We got time.
Okay.
There's not enough time to get it done and everything put together by this year.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
I apologize because I saw September 30th deadline and I'm like, how are we going to do that?
That's 2026.
Okay.
Or 26, I'm sorry.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Consider approval of contract change order number two, reducing the contract by $14,500 for the Bee Tree Pump Station, Orbital Road Stormwater Project.
Make a motion for the approval of the change order number two, reducing the contract by $14,500.
I'll second it.
Does anyone have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry. My vote is aye.
Burnell's not voting against everything. He's just a little bit smaller on the.
No, he's voting yes. He's, I need to pause. Okay, consider approval of payment application number one from Clearview Excavation in the amount of $131,500 for the Bee Tree Pump Station, Orbital Road Stormwater Project. You said we were having, we were holding 5%.
Correct, yeah, that's shown there in the retainers at the bottom.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Solicitors report.
Well, good evening. Let me start by, uh, going back to something earlier on the agenda, which was the, the question about whether the library is, the county library is subject to the, uh, open meetings law, or sunshine laws as it's known. And I did some research, uh, tonight while the meeting was progressing. And, um, it's, it's my, um, initial opinion that it likely is not, um, bound by the open meetings law because it doesn't fit within the definition of the agency under that law from section seven oh three. So, um, we could do further research on that, but I don't, I don't recommend it to you as incurring that expense for that. That I, I just don't see that as being a, uh, a successful approach to resolving the issues that you are facing there. So I'm sorry about that, I was hoping that I could, I, I pulled it up because I wanted to see the entire definition and that type of thing to see if there was any, any way I could fit it in that. And, uh, I, I don't see anything there, so.
Same thing the board's reported?
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, let me give you an update on, uh, the activities that I was involved with since the last Borough Council meeting. First, as you know, um, you approved by resolution the, uh, the taking of the Altieri property. So we did complete the declaration of taking. There's actually three things that we prepared, but all have to be filed twice with two separate offices, and they have to be filed on exactly the same day or all the filings double void and you have to start over. So, uh, we will nominate Mary Riddings, my paralegal, for sake of it at some point in this process, I'm sure. We did prepare the declaration of taking, uh, which is the declaration of the taking. It, uh, it said we're taking the land. Then there is a document called the notice of taking. That basically duplicates the information in the declaration of taking, but adds information about who may have an interest in the land. Who may, other than the owner? Well, people who have a judgment against Altieri Enterprises may be one group. Someone holding a mortgage may be another group. Uh, someone with an equitable interest such as a lease or something else. So what we had to do was search all the records to see who it was that had these interests so that we could put them by name and address on the notice. So we did that. Uh, and then we prepared the memorandum of taking. So here's how this works. The declaration of taking is first filed with the prudentialitarian recorder of deeds. And the notice of taking is filed with the prudentialitarian. So it's both of those documents are filed with the prudentialitarian first. Once they, once we get the timestamp, it's done electronically. So Mary filed it at seven thirty in the morning. And she called them and said, "Look, this is what we're facing. We've gotta get a timestamped copy over, of both of those documents, over to the recorder of deeds. We have to get them to file it, and they have to give us," it's not a timestamp, but it's called a, a, a book and page number. We have to get the book and page number for those documents. We have to type that into the memorandum of taking and then bring that memorandum to the prudentialitarian to file it all the same day. So she started that process at seven thirty, two o'clock. The prudentialitarian finally got us the date stamped copy. She personally walked it down to the reporter of deeds office, got the flan, uh, book and page number, came back to the office, put it into the memorandum of taking, and then got the memorandum filed with the prudentialitarian's office, all on the same day. So we got that done. That's what her activity was for that day. So the upshot is the borough's now the other properties. So if you will recall, um, these properties were all, one, one property was the street bed. A second property was the stormwater, um, detention pond. Holds the stormwater and releases it gradually into the street bed. And then there are several open spaces, lots that are required under the subdivision plan that you approved. So, uh, those are the things that you now own and can control. Altieri Enterprises does not exist anymore as an entity, so, uh, it's not functioning. So someone had to take that over. The next step for us will be to get service of all of those documents that just got filed, I think, Friday. So we'll get those served on, so that all of the property owners, all, anybody with an interest in the property will find out about the taking. And then the next step after that will be to calculate and pay the fair value of the properties, which we think is like a dollar, something like that, because they're not developable. There's no, it's a, it's a liability because you have to maintain the stormwater on. So, so we're not anticipating that would be an issue. But anyway, that was, that was what we did with respect to that taking, following up on the resolution that you quoted last week.
Will all the neighbors be notified as a part of it?
The neighbors are not on the notice list because they do not have an interest in the property, they don't have an ownership interest. If they're, the problem here, and that's a very good question, because typically, and what you're getting at is typically there's a homeowners association that would be charged with maintaining, um, these common areas, but none was formed. Just one of many problems that the Altieri, uh, group had as a developer. So because of that, it's, but that's why there, there's no other, no one else has an interest there like that.
Um, do we have a vote to file them?
Yes, yeah, well, once we're finalized here, basically, we will draft a letter to all of the property owners along Ashley Court. Explaining the situation, explaining why, um, and, you know, what the future plans are, obviously, for the street bed and the stormwater pond.
Let us get that notice out to the owners and people with an interest in the property first so that they don't hear through the grapevine and get bad information. We have specific notice requirements that we have to meet, so we will meet those requirements. I have to follow up with, uh, with Andy Schaefer on the Riffen situation. I'm not quite up to speed on that right now, uh, but it is on my list of things to keep on my task list until we get that to closure. I represented the borough in an enforcement action before Judge Sweeney against Mark Tomy, senior, for violation of two borough ordinances. One was the ordinance prohibiting the storage of inoperable vehicles, and the other was the stormwater management ordinance because some of those inoperable vehicles were leaking fluids that would get into the stormwater. So I want to thank a couple of people, Wade Porter and Andy Schaefer. Andy was a witness extraordinary, and, uh, so was Wade at the hearing. And, but they also provided me with the background documents that I needed to put together, meeting packets or, or exhibit packets for these hearings. And Judge Sweeney was, was, uh, received that information very well. She said that, that she found, um, the evidence that we presented incredible and thorough. So, well done to, to them. Also wanna thank, uh, a council member, Erica showed up at the, uh, hearing to observe the proceedings. And so I did, I take her aside before the hearing and explained to her, you know, how the hearing would proceed and that type of thing. She asked some very good questions, uh, and I always value that because she was hearing it for the first time. I had lived with it, you know, but how does it look to someone who hasn't seen this before? Does it make sense? So I appreciated, uh, her presence for two reasons. First, for the support, but second, for just the outsider's kind of review and overview of what we were doing. So I wanna thank her for being there for that. Judge Sweeney did find in favor of the, of the borough on all of the charges that were filed, imposed civil penalties, uh, in both cases, and directed that the matter be resolved in thirty days. So, um, Wade, I was in touch with him last week. He's already followed up with, um, an email message, I believe it was, to Mr. Tomy, saying, you know, "What are you doing? How are we gonna resolve this? What's the next step?" That type of thing. So he's initiated the conversation, uh, which I believe is in good faith and consistent with what, uh, Judge Sweeney is expecting. So, uh, we've done our part. I'm not as optimistic that Mr. Tomy will do his part, to be honest with you. So there may be more to the saga to come. But, uh, it is something, as I say, that I am maintaining on my list of things to monitor for the borough, uh, to try to get this area resolved for you. And kind of in a, unfortunately, similar vein, uh, we have the Wildison property. That's the one along the rail trail, right? Yeah, uh, so with all the junk, um, uh, I mean, God bless Andy for the letters that he's written, the efforts he's put in to try and get this resolved in a way that's fair and respectful, but Wildisons aren't having it. And so they're not, they, it's, it was one step forward at one point, but then they took two steps back. So that's where we're at now. So just know, again, that's another thing that we're monitoring. We have the judgment there. So, uh, we're prepared to take action and, uh, if necessary, uh, and if the borough has to do the cleanup for the, the Wildisons, then we're prepared, at Saxon and Stump, we're all prepared to place a lien against their property and do what it takes to reimburse the borough for the expenses that it incurs. So including, by the way, the attorney fees in addition to the jump and move costs. So all of that will be part of the lien. So just be aware, we're working on that. And, um, then the last matter is, uh, on the Devon Taylor lawsuit. I wanted to let you know that, uh, as I reported last month, there was, um, a motion filed to basically dismiss the complaint in its entirety. And I discussed that with you about, you know, because it requires some extrinsic evidence outside of the cleanings themselves, we might have to wait for a motion for summary judgment for that. But nevertheless, it's, it's, it's been filed and it's pending. But on, um, um, July thirty, uh, Judge Susan Schwab had been the magistrate district judge that was assigned to case. And on July thirty, uh, the case was reassigned to magistrate Judge Sean, that's S.E.A.N. I think it's Camoni, C.A.M.O.N.I. So we have not heard anything since then, it'll probably take Judge Camoni some time to get up to speed on the filings, but, um, uh, that's, uh, the development there. My expectation is, because there's a new judge assigned, that the matter will proceed, but that there might be a short delay while the judge absorbs the new, the new cases. Because I have a feeling, typically when something like this happens, it's, there's more than one case that shifted. So there might have been several cases that moved, uh, for whatever reason, workload adjustments or something like that. So how soon the judge will get, the, the new judge will get to it is, is hard to predict at this point. I will say though, that my experience is that, uh, the federal courts tend to move quickly, so sixty days is not an unreasonable expectation for a decision. So I'll let you know when we get it. So that's my report tonight. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer it for you.
Thank you, that was a great job. And hopefully, when we have tough cases, like the two that you just mentioned, that that'll be our normal process of procedure.
Yeah, I, I think it has to be. You know, it's, it's a type of thing where there's no substitute for persistence in, in that type of a case. You're just keeping moving, taking the next step, and the next step is frustrating because it's a slow process. But if you just keep taking the next step, uh, you will get to an endpoint that resolves the issue.
Thank you.
Oh, I forgot. Nathan is here with us. Nathan Alfiam Akaha is, uh, was a summer intern at our, uh, law firm. He's interested in becoming a lawyer. He, uh, decided to shadow me tonight because he doesn't know any better, uh, what he's learning. So, uh, I, I wanted to acknowledge his presence here tonight. Uh, he is about to leave to go back to college for a sophomore year. So we'll be saying goodbye to him for the summer and, and hopefully he'll come back again. But I just wanna acknowledge, uh, his presence here today.
And the first teacher is George Washington, Rossing, correct?
Yes.
Very nice. Good luck.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Are you gonna have a more updated?
Yeah, Nick.
Go ahead, Ken.
Okay, uh, Mr. Solicitor, I have a question. If we find it necessary to go on with the Wildison property, is there anything from a legal standpoint we need to do prior to doing that?
Well, there are a lot of things, and, uh, and your borough manager has been very diligent in making sure that they, those things are being accomplished. So-
Okay.
Uh, but we do have, you know, for example, we have a judgment, we have, how many notice letters have you sent them now?
Three.
Three. So, you know, I do think that we've done the due diligence that's necessary to, uh, to rectify the situation.
We don't need anything else from Judge Sweeney?
Not from Judge Sweeney, I don't think, no.
Okay.
I was gonna ask about, what was the, the latest with that property as far as their efforts for cleaning up? I've not driven by it from the two weeks.
They're back to where they were.
That's what I was afraid of because I couldn't really see the property.
All efforts have been negated.
Okay.
Unfortunately, as Solicitor Tilly said, it was a step forward and now two steps back.
I wasn't sure if he was referring to the step backs in, in the past or current steps back? Okay.
I'm sorry, wasn't clear on that. But what I meant was that they had made efforts apparently to start cleaning it, but now there's more junk there that's presently there that needs to be addressed.
That's it.
I thought it was twenty seven votes as well.
Uh, next up is the manager report. And before you start in on that, I wanted to comment about the job that you've done on Smoke on the Rails. I mean, that is such a feather in New Freedoms cap. I mean, I've seen companies spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on bonding and team building exercises. And what you've done with Smoke on the Rails is you've taken Public Works, the sewage treatment plan, all of, all of, you know, several council members, and you brought them all together. And that alone is worth everything that you've done. But to see the, the joy and, and camaraderie, and I understand they even lost an individual this year, one of the pit masters, and to see that outpouring of love and affection and financial support given. It was, it was enjoyable for me and Jenny, and I think Jenny was there and, oh, yeah, and, um-
Jake lives here.
Huh?
I said Jake pretty much lives here.
So, yeah, and, uh, yeah, it was just fantastic. And-
Mr., Mr. President?
And one last thing.
Yes?
One last thing. You don't only get the support from the employees, but you get their spouses and their children. And you have people there who, who spend two days to make, to put New Freedom on the map. And, uh, I think Christian Phillips Hill took notice. I think, I think a lot of people took notice to that. So I just wanna say, job well done.
Thank you. Yeah, it's definitely a group effort, and I, I appreciate everybody's, uh, long hard hours, the volunteer hours, the families coming out, the sponsors, the vendors, the judges, the editors, everybody who, who makes it happen. So it's a, a large undertaking. I think it's good for New Freedom as a whole. And, uh, as we noted, it was definitely hot. And it was hot, and we had some potential weather in the area, which actually didn't hit us until Sunday late afternoon, actually after awards, but, uh, it was still well received by the community and by the vendors, and hope to continue. Appreciate that. Appreciate that.
Kim, you were gonna say?
Yeah, so you said it was enjoyable for everybody, but you didn't have to taste 25 appetizer entries.
Oh, poor, poor Kim.
Believe me, it was enjoyable.
Yeah, it was fantastic.
The next, the next two days were terrible, but that was enjoyable.
I'm sorry, go ahead with your manager's report.
Sure. Everybody has a copy of the July manager's report in their package tonight, as well as an update on grant applications. I believe for the month of July, there were no changes to, except for some funding updates to the grant report. Additionally, I did provide counsel with a copy of the comments on the regional comprehensive plan, draft regional comprehensive plan that the York County Planning Commission was reviewing. So, there's a couple pages of comments, and their recommendation was to not adopt that regional comprehensive plan until those recommendations are addressed. There is a follow-up meeting scheduled with the municipalities and the consultant that was brought on board to complete the regional comprehensive plan later this week on Thursday, to go over those comments and see how they're going to be addressed to, to move forward.
Is that an open meeting?
It is, yes. Yeah, the, the meetings have been opened.
What time?
I believe that meeting is 2:00 at Shrewsbury Township.
Thank you.
You said the date, the date is Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday at 2:00.
Thursday at 2:00 at Shrewsbury Township.
Is this Thursday?
Yes.
Yep.
So, we'll look to address those comments with the consultant and kind of recap everything and see what the process is to move forward. If you recall, we were hoping to be able to adopt that regional comprehensive plan during the month of August by the number of municipalities, but a little bump in the road until, until those items can be addressed. Not sure if it'll be reported on, but we did begin the closing out year one of the DCNR Circuit Rider Grant and submitted everything, including this payment to DCNR. That was approved. And in conjunction with that, we did send out notice of advertising for that open position and begin that process over again with the September 1 submission deadline of resumes. So, that'll go through the process again with DCNR as far, as far as picking a few candidates to interview, obviously with Shrewsbury Township and New Freedom Borough's feedback, and then go through that interview process. Obviously, we want to keep things moving there as, as quick as possible.
Since we have a sitting board, is the board gonna be involved in the hiring process?
I think, I think we need representatives from the board, from, just like we have in the past, the township and the borough, as well as DCNR. They don't have to be involved with it. I did report earlier about the winter maintenance agreement and the severe weather additional payment, and that's noted in there as well. And that was, again, just over $5,000 reimbursed to the borough for that winter maintenance Other than that, there's just a couple other highlights there. I will say, regarding York County SPCA, the municipal contracts are up for renewal at the end of this year, going into 2026. And if you've followed that a little bit, there's a little bit of controversy out there, especially on social media regarding York County's stray dog intake program and how that's being handled. Representatives from the SPCA are meeting with the municipal, York County Municipal Managers Group. We're reviewing those policies as a group. We'll be reviewing the changes to the contract as a group, and then each, obviously, municipality will be taking it back to their board for consideration. So, there's additional funding requests to York County Commissioners, so they're getting hit from the library and the SPCA side already, as they look to their 2026 budget for additional funding. But, I think it's just something we need to keep on the radar as we move into the budget process for 2026.
How is the rec grant affected when we have no rector after?
So, the, as far as any events that were scheduled, that has been pretty much taken over by representatives of the board. Any kind of administration for programming everything, we've been handling it in the office here. A lot of the programs have already been set up in the MyRec software, so it's just a matter of processing registrations, which is fairly automated. Any reservation requests, we were already handling before the director for the facility, so that's just continuing. When I say facility, pavilion rentals and community center rentals, yes.
Does the grant itself affect it?
That's a good question. So, the grant is not affected at all. The, the payment for year one was already approved and is in the state office of the controller for final distribution. But basically, it's just, it increases the window that we have for year two. So, year two would have started, would have already started, but we're working into that year two timeframe, and that is just gonna be drawn out a little bit. So, it just kind of extends that grant freedom a little bit.
Is there a timeline where anyone has to be hired?
There is none.
So, does the grant just kind of freeze where it is?
In theory, yes, yeah.
And then the new person coming in, there's been a reduction in the overall original award of the grant? So...
For year two, yeah, it's 75% of the salary.
75%. Is the salary being looked at?
As far as...
Starting? The complete package was around $122,000 that started out for this last one. Is that being looked at at all, reduced, increased?
We would not be able to increase the salary because agreement's in place. There are, there are modifications as far as you do cost of living increases or things like that, but as far as increasing, there's no need to increase the starting salary of that. And the starting salary was, was $60,000. So, it's 75% of the $60,000.
We put everything, the complete package, it's $122,000.
If you're looking at benefits and everything, sure.
But the cost of having that person out the door, also $122,000, is that looking to be reduced at all, or is the next one coming in's gonna be right, right there also?
I, I, I would say it's not looking to be reduced at this point, but if there would be, based on the candidates, if, you know, there would need to be an adjustment because of experience or something, maybe there could be a reduction in, in that panel. And it's just, just to clarify, it's only 75% of the $60,000. It's not benefits now. That's all happened, unless anybody has any other questions?
President's report, I don't really have anything, just a couple of comments. I went ahead and took ICS-100, and I got my certificate for that. I, I thought about trying to have a class in here, but the first class is two hours, the second class is four hours, and then it goes from there. So, I think it, it's actually designed to be self-paced, and I would recommend that all of us take it, especially at the mayor, president, vice president, and president pro town. And so, anyone staying on council beyond January 1, and the new people coming on should be looking at taking the class. Andrew has offered to, if you don't have a computer, you don't have a setup where you can take the class at your own speed, certainly could come in and take it here. That's very easy to do. You just really, if you just Google FEMA, ICS-100, or ICS-200, et cetera. And as a side note, my grandson, who's 15 this month, just completed all four. And he's a fire, he's a junior firefighter, and so he's ahead of me. I'm about a third of the way through the 200. So, and he said it's very easy.
I did it when I came on three years ago. Every time new members come on, the current members should all get certified, and then all new council members that come on, it should be on the top of their list.
I agree. Like I said, Andrew has said, you know, he'll open up the, the room, if you want to do it as a group. It's very easy to do as, I mean, they watch you right through, and there's little practice quizzes through the lesson, and so it's really not a hard course to take.
The great thing is, once you've done it, it doesn't expire.
Right.
Done.
And you get a certificate suitable for frame.
I turned those into Andrew's, but I think it's important that we have him on file here, so if anything does happen.
That's a good point.
You know, he has documentation that we are, that's certified.
Yeah. And at some point, it might be, uh, help, be helpful for him, right? To, because of the, because of our preferences.
I'm sure they'd be impressed.
And so, I have, Mr. Mayor, monthly schema report?
I just got that today. I thought maybe Sam was gonna present that. I know his, let me find it here. I think it's at the end, isn't it, Andrew?
Yeah, it, it actually came out after packing.
And I don't have it in my packet.
Yeah, that, Kim, that was with the documents that were attached separately, that were provided at tonight's meeting. So, you should have, it was in with the police report documents as well.
Why don't we, why don't we just take?
Yeah, that's, that's on my computer yet. I didn't print that all.
Kim, why don't you just table it until next time, and we, we all have it, so we can read it, and if there's any questions, you can answer next, next meeting.
Yeah, we basically have, we, we did have a, a meeting, and basically, a lot of it, I think I brought up the live council meeting, has to do with some problems there at Glenrock, because of the way that their stormwater runoff, it goes through, what is, what do they call it, the mill race? It, it, it's not, it's not really correct. They, they need to do some work on that. Everything from here and railroad tends to go down that way. They did have some major flooding with the last couple of storms, but I think there was no damage in Glenrock at this, at that time. I know Stan is looking into, I brought up too, the, the radio situation, and I'm waiting to get, for him to get back to me on where we are going to be with that, if they're going to change radios. That's gonna be a major, major monetary drain on the fire and the mess, so I'm hoping that that's not for a while, but we're, we're looking at maybe $70,000, $80,000 from new radios.
When they're going out, they're, they're not gonna be repaired anymore, as I understand.
No, there are no arms.
So, it's, it's pretty much, pretty much, I mean, they still work, but pretty much as they, as they die, they'll have to be replaced if, if nothing else.
Well, they do now, but they're talking about changing the complete, I don't, I'm not into the techno, technical stuff like, like Stan is, but absolute changing the, like, frequency or whatever of the radios, and they just won't work with our current systems and our current radios. There's still in some discussion about that because of the extreme expense that would be involved. So, that, that's pretty much all I have, and just, again, a thank you to Andrew and the staff. From where I live, it sure smelled good. Enjoyed the balcony and the smells and going down and seeing everybody, having an enjoyable time. I, I think they deserve a lot of accolades for their hard earned efforts and time.
Thanks, Kim. Erica, police report?
Yes, unfortunately, Storist Town had a fire, and there was two deaths in that. It's being investigated at this point. Also, that Bailey Hotel, stabbing there, so the police were pretty busy this past week. Officer Heffner brought in two Shields that had come in. They had looked them over, made some recommendations on what they should do. Originally allocated, the commission, $15,000 for Shields. There was handgun rated about $1,800, and then rifle rated close to $7,000. So, the commission allocated another, about $11,000 at the meeting. Officer Heffner was able to talk with the manufacturer, they're a USA-made manufacturer. He's, and talks with them now, working on the price. They're knocking a considerable amount of money off, so hopefully, in the next 30 days or so, they'll be able to get Shields ordered, looking to possibly purchase up to eight of them, I believe it is. And the school districts possibly looking to get them as well. The commission also approved Samantha to replace Gail with the financing. The finance committee will get together with Gail and hopefully make a smooth transition and come up with a timeline for that to happen. I know Gail would like to be retired by the end of next month. I don't know that that'll happen, but she will definitely be around for budgeting and so forth, so that's all.
Any questions on, I'm sorry, any questions on the police report? Questions on the engineering report?
I think, how much, I guess what's involved with the certification of magnitude achievement? Any hours of training? Is it different tests?
Yeah, that's just the training to get to the point, to be able to sit for the exam. So, the hours is the initial.
For that one, it was, I think, a 12-week course, and it was like four, three or four hours per session. It was gone through zoom. And then the upcoming test, so congratulations then. And then the upcoming test, so congratulations then for making that the best of all, with the test.
Yeah. I think it's a lot of information.
Imagine. And Jake, the Well Four, that's the one where I saw you guys?
Yeah.
Crazy hole in the ground. It was definitely a group effort from what I saw them down there doing, doing what they, what they could, and then having, I think you guys hand dug some of that because of utilities?
Oh, we used the back trailer.
Yeah.
In the back, though. But yeah, it was a, it was a group effort. We were there until 7:30, 8:00, and I'd get everything powered back up. Yeah, but it's run a good, and hopefully we can use that one.
Excellent.
I want to point out, too, that the, paying their online operator certification for water, I mean, that's, that's a huge deal. When we got caught in COVID the last time, where we had to go to split shifts, we had a lot enough people qualified, and Jake stepped up, and other people have stepped up, and I think council, there was a lot of thank yous for, for that, to go through the training and make sure they stay up to date on water certification. At one point, we had to hire a consultant to come in during COVID because we lost people, and, I mean, we're, we're talking, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $36,000. So you're saving us money, and you're making sure that we can have safe drinking water. Very much appreciated. Anything else on water? Waste water treatment plant? Again, another one. Always the gold. Always the gold hits. Questions on waste water? Anything in significance on the RKC?
No. Things are progressing well. They were required to submit an updated construction schedule prior to submission of human application number five, and they did submit that, but human application number five was still under review, so that's why we didn't have it for council's consideration tonight.
Okay. Something in code enforcement? Can we cover it? Have any questions on the code enforcement? Recreation?
Nothing other, most of it's already been covered as far as the rec director and the progress with that. Let me make sure I get my date and time right. The final concert in the park will be this coming Saturday. It will be called Vita. Food trucks and games start at 6:30, and music starts at 7:00. Andy, I believe you're going to be there, opening everything up, so thank you, thank you for that.
Of course.
Thank you. Any questions? Kim, did you have anything to add to EMS and fire? I don't either.
I'm sorry, I didn't know. I had you on mute.
No, you're okay.
Okay, I, I just have our standard EMS report. It's fairly, fairly standard, have previous months. And here, we had, we had a total of 174 calls. Out of those, we missed 16, which were handled by various other companies. Even, I know we complained about Meckel and Maryland a lot, but Maryland came up and assisted us on a couple of calls. I think we had a couple of cardiac arrests, and we were out. I wanted to get ahold of the supervisor to find out what might have happened with those cardiac arrests and why we weren't able to get the chase truck to those instead of waiting for 60. Other than that, we brought out, I can give you a breakdown of the number of calls per municipality. Glenrock, we responded to 10, Hopewell, 16, Maryland, 20, New Freeland, 26, seven in Stewartstown, Stewartstown Borough, 32, or Shrewsbury Borough, excuse me, 32, Shrewsbury Township, which is always the, the highest number, 59, Springfield Township, the one. And that was the total. And the missed calls were in Shrewsbury Borough, Shrewsbury Township, and we only had three missed in Freeland, while we're out, and unavailable, and other calls. So they're doing a great job, fire, that, as you said, they're getting a lot of new volunteers, a lot of people coming off probation, and I, I, just, we're open deck, we'll see the new, number of people that are showing up at our, at our meetings and volunteering.
That is, by the way, another thing that they said during the fire, the fire study, the fact that we do have a lot of interest in our, in our fire companies, both Shrewsbury Borough and...
Absolutely, absolutely. We have a lot of work.
We were commended by DCED on that, so. Thank you, thanks, Kim.
Kim, out of those 174 calls, is that a mixture of EMS and fire?
Strictly EMS. Strictly EMS calls.
Just EMS?
Yeah, I guess Chris wasn't there tonight. There was a fire call right before council started, so, I mean, it was down in Freeland, and I saw him go down Front Street, so he, he was probably on that. I did ask him, if he's not going to be able to come, please forward them to me, and I'd be happy to, you know, give you that information during this report, but you know how it is, the siren goes off, I think it went off, you could hear it when your meeting started. Maybe there's no way he could forward it to me, maybe I'll ask him to send me a copy of this report a couple days ahead of time in case something happens.
Or even a morning of, or...
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think there's anything else on any of the committee reports. We didn't have any correspondence. Anyone have anything else?
Yeah, I want to echo what they were talking about with, with Andrew. A friend of mine was one of the masters chats at the site, and he's been all over the place doing this, and he, he rated you very highly compared to people all over the Midwest where he did his thing.
I appreciate him making a trip every year.
He comes from, his father and mother live over in Homewood Township. Please come.
Public comment on non-agenda items? If the executive section requires, I would entertain a motion.
Motion for a German?
All second. All favor?
Aye. Good night, all.
Night, thanks, Kim. Thanks for now.
Don't forget to turn the recorder off, Andrew.